I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a correction for item A. It's just an error, typo correction.
What's the difference?
Um, it's page three, section four. George, there was a commissioner absent and Jessica put five A's, it should be four A's and one absent. So it's just a faceoff.
This isn't you with communications, public communications. The example I think was the Harbor Ridge traded their area for algae. They noticed various pesticides, what have you. And then you put a stake in the ground for a little, I would say, piece of paper that says how long, what the chemicals are. And I suppose if you're planning taking kids to the beach or whatever, you're going to be there before you see that. And I wondered, because several of these run for a period of days, and I guess I wondered if there was a way the city could help in getting the word out that the waters have been treated. I just think that folks, parents might want to know before they're putting their kids in the water, or even myself, you know, that what's been happening with the water, because it isn't necessarily really apparent, and you might not know until you've got it. So just a suggestion. Thank you.
Commissioner. My son works for Harbor Ridge and I can talk to the manager there and see if he can set the city an email. Let me do that. That's a good idea.
I'm saying so you can get it out via the city website or somehow I did it during state.
Sure.
Thank you.
Could you check this? There's some complication that's been given nearby block.
Sure.
There was, what trigger did was that there was actually one of those, I mean, that sort of little boat launch. And when someone went in, the wind it blew a lot of river into the river. So there's some kind of movement.
When government determines your world, America was founded on Judeo-Christian principles. That statement is factually accurate and cannot be denied. In God we trust allows us to attain e pluribus moment out of men one. The very reason America exists today is the fact that many people of many races and of many religions have sought the opportunity to be free. They sought to be free of the shackles of tyranny, to be free to dream their dreams in the greatest nation on the face of the earth, not submit to the whims of in person or group seeking advantage that allows them tyrannical dominion. The bedrock of this noble society, this great nation, is the nuclear family. That which has held us together as Americans these hundreds of years is the very same thing that has held us together as humans these many thousands of years. The nuclear family is generational and all, from the newborn to the great, great grandparents. These are love and respect. However, what we are doing to our seniors, our generational funds of life guidance and history is exclusionary to the detriment of the upcoming generations. We are disengaging from generational love and respect and turning our backs on the knowledge and wisdom of our elders. We are inflicting great harm upon young and older life as we lose a critical part of our humanity. In 2014, Pope Francis' message to the Pontifical Academy for Life at their meeting Aging and Disability talked about a tyrannical dominion which leads to the exclusion of and at times even kills the elderly. In America, we have turned our collective back on seniors and disabled persons. We created a warehouse culture. We put seniors and disabled persons away on a shelf to be taken on the plate with, should we choose. But that's a choice that just doesn't happen. It is not simply about exploitation and oppression, but an out of sight, out of mind, who really cares anyway attitude. The Pope ended his message by noting that the most serious of deprivations experienced by seniors and disabled persons isn't the aging or the disability of one spot. It is abandonment, exclusion, and deprivation. We must do better. We are throwing away our greatest asset, our seniors, to the detriment of the young. When we push any segment of our society off the stage, we harm ourselves and our children, and we harm the very fabric of this great nations. It is time to reintroduce Boeing seniors and disabled persons to the community. It is time to make the needed adjustments to be certain we include Boeing seniors and disabled persons in all aspects of community social interaction. It is crucial to our well-being personally and collectively. It is time to refocus our attention and encourage our youth to engage with seniors and disabled persons. It will have numerous benefits for both young and old. I pray that we come to terms with our familial and communal responsibilities. I pray that we once again know the worth of our seniors and disabled persons, those we all too often choose to ignore. Thank you. God bless America.
I'm not opposed to, um, what I think. So I don't know if it very nicely would be appropriate. But I'm not opposed to it at some point in time. Just had a problem with the words, you know, what she read in the last one. It's everything we're striving to do. So I've said before, saying again, sixteen years in the school board, didn't believe in mission statements, didn't believe in, I don't believe in thought. I believe in what, believe in what I want. Whereas, whereas. I don't agree to my thing. Today's conversation may answer some of those points. There's points of my resolution that I disagree with. I don't mind being a gentleman, but for her, I'd like to stay. Some of those points that she wanted to make, but I oppose. Yeah, but I think after the discussion today, I'm all business that, you know, we may answer some of those questions. And consider what we have in the future.
Just a couple items for today. We hired a new executive assistant. Her name is Dawn Middleton, and she's scheduled to work on Monday, August 1st. We have the state primary election. That's next Tuesday, the second. Polls for that position will be, or for that will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And sample pallet, excuse me, sample ballots are posted downstairs, not by the entrance, but at the front desk of the city offices. And then this weekend on Saturday and Sunday, the office will be opening, be open for the processing of ballots. And I believe that's from 8:00 AM till noon. There'll be a celebration next Friday, August 5th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Veterans Park Pavilion. It'll be a celebration of John Lamont's 50 years in the MS profession, eighteen of those with us. His family's putting that together and we're working with them on that. The community is invited and encouraged to attend. And if you have any questions on these or other items, I'd be glad to try and address them.
Yeah, so I have no problem with your choice for executive assistant. Mike, I guess, you know, we're really talking about this, and we knew that we need to replace bars. So this is replacing bar completely?
We'll find out. She's interested in doing all aspects of the job, including the harbor master. And we'll get her introduced to that as well, too, while we have Tom Urban working with us this year.
Okay, I guess, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I mean, if we're creating another whole position, then I like that discussion.
We're not creating another whole position at this point.
Well, we had, we had one person doing two jobs, and now if you're telling me that this job is only going to be an executive assistant, then we need our.
No, what I tried to just say was that Dawn is interested in doing both, the hope, the hope.
You said, you said we're going to buy out.
Yes.
Yes.
No, no, neither am I. Yes, she is looking to, she is looking to be the harbor master and the executive assistant, one position, one person. Yes. Yes, there's been one proposal that's been received, and they'll be beginning to review that shortly.
At this, at the present time, I'm a person, I'm a president, and the committee, at this point, I think the city commission more clearly about the boundaries and work. It's more of a justice. And finally, I have a question about the ability of the staff to lead the ball. To make the point person, much of this work is done in the short term. So those recommendations I've identified.
Hi, gentlemen. Um, I agree that there, um, there are important individuals that are relevant that I would like to ask questions in regards to waterways committee with being worn, Arvin Mosh being worn. Um, kind of in my mind right now, there's two options, option A being, um, there's no expansion plans, but there is a repair and upkeep project that is needed drastically. I'm curious in what that would cost and getting those numbers from Arvin Mosh, potentially increasing slip capacity within this footprint. Um, that would be a question for Arvin Mosh as well, that I would be interested in getting directly from them and not third party on. And the waterways grant, my concern is as far as the grants, there's been a little bit of misclarity as far as, um, those three potential grants, if they can only be utilized for new project um, with increased slip capacity, or if they can be utilized for a new project. Fixing what we currently have without increasing slip capacity, I would like that answer directly from the waterways committee and not third party down the information as well. And then the electrical, where I stand on that is it needs to be addressed as soon as possible. So obviously, people are going to be going into the winter season, so it then most realized. And we need the bubblers and everything working throughout the winter. The way I see that decision is we have two different options, going with Arvin Mosh's numbers, estimates, and their partner in engineering, electrical term, with various hefty price tag. If that is the option that we go with, I would like to know and see clearly financially what portions of that project will be wasted. When I say wasted, what I mean is what expenses are going to be prepaid expense when we do do the development or the repairs and the docs that are out there. Um, so I had that financial number in front of me specifically laid out by Arvin Mosh. And the second option with the electrical, which I would be more in favor of financially being fiscal responsible, would be if we can get an engineer stamp and having a local electrician, that would be the ideal situation. But those conversations need to be, we need to reach out to these local electricians and ask what they need from us as municipal. Municipality and explore options and get that engineer stamp as soon as possible. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Uh, sure. Three blocks of ten, so I started with our core for the extension. Um, that makes sense, so we know what we're dealing with, timelines that we usually extend, and we have to file for that extension. ASAP to take us into the power of the year, provides its time. We need to know that, that means. Waterways commission, yes, I agree with you that you need to know the status of the grants and what it can be applied for, timelines on it, and again, a black and white answer so that we can make that determination. Electrical, I have no problem with local contractors or professional contractors from around the state that deal with municipal highways. I, I think you're right. Get some bids, and we understand how we can use that grant money to best get what's accomplished. I think we have to do the infrastructure to get the base that they're talking about, a base up there with maybe four, forty pages or three. You know, whatever phase we need, that's going to be the big cost, and to vary the range out to the docks. But that's going to be the big infrastructure price. And that grant can cover that part of the electrical upgraded, right, to the grid on. Again, how much timeline can be parts of their use vocal, of their, of their try to use vocal? Or whatever, wanting for the best price, job done, timeline. But again, we don't know that information. So we really locked up that, and we read Evan Marsh, we've worked with him twenty years, they have the engineers, they understand electrical. They're the ones that writing this answer, so we get. I agree with you that Evan Marsh is who we use, and they have answered. What can we do within the footprint? I agree with Tim, expansion within the footprint makes total sense. So, and I've stated that before, if we can not increase the boundary above the break wall, or the break wall. And we can reconfigure some factors. Can we accomplish A, replacement, B, expansion? And C, all the upgrades, electrical, water, everything that goes with it. Can we accomplish all that? Who's going to give us that answer? Evan Marsh. And again, because I stand, although the urgency of that decision is critical, because that plays into what grants can use. Um, I agree with a staff point person, should be my opinion. And maybe our new person also, but I think that before we would create an ad hoc committee that, that we need these answers, I think these answers would maybe we don't need an ad hoc, because these answers would tell us the direction, a timeline, and a cost. Those were really. And variables within equipment can be moved in stage. Unfortunately, since we're in the same spot that we were before. And the price tag, I don't think is going to be much different. And I mean, the way I think cost would be the opposite of the grant. So now unfortunately, this thing follow. Price tag may follow the taxes, or some other great way. We'll solve that problem too. So a good sixth point might be, we involve also our cost person, our, our financial consultant. And, and he can guide us financially to option A, B, and C. And so we put all this information together, and I, and I think we're going to come up with some black and white answers, and that's what we want. And that's what keeps this different form of citizens, is the answer. If you choose this parent to go to that activity, I agree. But these are still the answers either tasked to us in administration or tasked, I don't care. I think we can do it more efficiently, more quickly. Uh, no matter what we do, I think that subversion stands there to get these answers. That means meeting with an engineer, five of us, plus staff. ASAP, that means Zoom meeting, that's fine, I don't care. But we need these answers, probably same with all, I don't want to see the waterways, there shouldn't be a couple. Point, man, one person, the electrical. And the white person, or we need to meet with the kids. So, um, conclusion, I think you're on the right track, it's rare. Tim, I have some further lighter points. And, um, subversion, Steve, there. To get black and white answers, options. It is two points. I think I'd like to have a definite description of what's in the current footprint of the reasons. I think we need to have that in black and white. If we get them, we're not going to fail, but we keep this input, but we know exactly what's going on as well. Uh, the second point is, as far as the electrical, fixing electrical, uh, which, you know, maybe temporary to get it up and running for maybe next year, I'd like to have Kevin Schleckel, electric inspector, eat the final say of it's legal. For us to have to fix, you know, what's broken to get it on, so it's legal, versus, you know, assuming next year. I'd like to have an engineer to tell us what really is that, if he's, if he's able to do that, sure. But I think that's what, you know, that's going to probably be a temporary basis on a temporary. Yeah, no problem, what's been said, the, uh, with the exception of Tom, you haven't stated that about the, the problem, if that, there are rebuild, there's grant funds for the exchange. Uh, we're so we've been told, uh, if, if that's different, I'd love. Uh, but that's, that's not what the two of you were told, that's not what the rest of us have been told since, you know, since we've been sitting here for nine months. Uh, so that part, I think, is, is a, is a moot point. What I, the, the one thing that I was, I talked with, was here for about an hour and a half in the meeting, the last meeting, and we talked with a few people that were here, we were looking at that, and so I think one option, I don't view this. I think one option that we might have as a, as a rebuild, you know, you know, the thing is EDOC was going to be a complete rebuild. Because right now, some EDOC regions don't actually listen, you know, but that one could, the, the proposal was build that going out with the new proposals. I think that would be an option to take some of our grant money that we got for the arena and, you know, start making repairs or replacing repairs, um, and, and live within our means. Uh, the, uh, as far, so that's the one thing on that. As far as the electrical aspect, we talked a lot about this, the, I understand what George said, and I, and I don't know that, you know, that we're going to get, uh, Kevin here to sit and say, well, if you do this, 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 and this, then, you know, you know, I'll sign off. I think it's more of, hey, here's what I need, uh, and, and, and I'll let you go for a little while. And, and that's what I've been saying for the last couple of months, is that, is that there's no sense in going to Avenue Mars, you know, almost hundred thousand dollar fix, when we can, when we can get it, when, when we can put enough of the band-aid on it, to get it to live us through until we know what we're doing with this marina. Uh, the, I, I would love to sit down, uh, you know, and, uh, talk, you know, with the article about, you know, uh, extensions, uh, and everything like that. They have no problem with that. Uh, I, you know, we talked a lot about Avenue Mars, you know what? Uh, they've been at this for a long time, you know, maybe they're not at once, maybe, maybe we look at another, another option. Uh, and I have no problem sitting down and talking to them the same, okay, you know, if we do just this and this, what, you know, where are we going to be at? Uh, it's nice to hear, you know, uh, the, the words that, okay, I guess we're not going to move the originator's out. And I, and I guess we're going to live within the marinas. There you go, that's something that we, you know, would not come up with, so I, I don't have a problem with that. I think, again, the, the way that, the way that the marina was going to be laid out, could be laid out. You're still going to be able to gain a few slips and everything, and I think, I think if we change our focus off of worrying about having sixty and eighty foot slips, uh, even though, you know, as Martin's saying, well, an ageless lift, I can park three boats in it, I get it. But, uh, you know, I think we can figure in for, you know, more what this is supposed to be upon the marina, I, I think is a little bit more correct. Uh, sure, there's somebody out there that's got sixty and eighty foot boat that's going, I wish this city shut up, but it doesn't matter. Uh, the, I think, I think again, you know, this is, we, we, we're kind of losing sight of what this marina has been and, and should be. The one thing that I, I talked to you about, Hugh, what we've got to do is we've got to do this before the end of next month. And we've got to sit down, and we've got to set out our rates for next year. Because if we don't, then it's a real pickle to try and change. And, uh, and I I I think our rates are, uh, quite frankly, uh, on the ridiculous side. Uh, and I think that if, you know, if we're going to try to work and rebuild this marina, there's no way that we can where we're at moving forward. And you, uh, you don't have to take my word for it. You can just look around and 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 look at what a, what a boat's living costs. Not just at point, any shore, any shore in the area. You can't, you can't buy it also for under about four thousand dollars a foot rate. Which might be ridiculous for a lot of people. And and I'm not, and and it is. But the point is, is that what we've been subsidizing this marina forever. And it and and that's the ludicrous part. It is that you're, you can, you can rent these these slits for next to nothing compared to what, you know, it would, it would cost someone. And and you're like, well, you still have, uh, dues and and fees and everything. So we definitely have to look at our race structure. And again, with what we got next month to do. So, uh, we definitely need to get, get, get it together on that as well. Uh, the, uh, I think that was the majority of what you said. They, uh, I said the ad hoc committee, uh, I I don't, I'm I'm not saying I won't board. I'm not saying I won't get it. I I think that, um, I'm worried about the town setting. I'm worried about logging down the boat in time. And I'd rather, I'd rather try to get it to a, get to a direction and a decision and then pack the room and have a delta slide into the grid. I think that's, uh, you know, a better way to try to try and get it correctioned. Um, so those are both the main, yeah, the main talking points that I can, I I, you know, Tim, Tim said about, you know, uh, meeting some of these, you know, people that have advanced states that is in the past and everything like that. I keep the F Mars and, um, and, uh, and I was so I I have no problem with that. But it's, uh, you know, we gotta, we gotta move a a lot faster than you then. And, uh, and then then you talk on the list to get the electric and take it care of. And we talked with both the contractors and say, hey, look, how do you do that? We've got, we've got the, uh, you know, county contractor that said, if you do this, you know, it's, and and that bill is above what even third, what that much.
Couple clarification, frankly. Just two guys. One is you said our our rates are ridiculous. I didn't call them that. Higher levels.
Low.
Levels. He said low. But but our rates are regulated by the state. When they give slip.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, they were, they were, they were a third of the way up.
We're two thirds of the way up. Okay. Second point is you said that, um, we've been subsidized. According to my interpretation from financials, we need this like item at least twelve years going. And it's been solely self sufficient. So we have not done subsidized.
We had that. If it's been subsidized, if it's been self sufficient, then why are we in the middle of it? It it has, um, and 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 the other aspect of it is we we had this in the budget, you know, uh, in our budget discussion. We we don't even have a salary here. You know, so you you go pulling that out. I mean, I don't think you can get in an argument with you right now, but it's not. You know, it's not. And then because you're, because it makes a little bit of money, uh, or or yes, but obviously we have to afford any of that money. Other than, you know, two repairs here and there, because we've been that on the long course for fifteen years. That's the biggest one. I want to add a different one. Oh, we need to read this screen some.
Okay. Again, this is two points of clarification. Um, when I'm saying third party answers to like waterways grant, my biggest concern is finding out if these brands can be used for new construction only or redevelopment. Where I'm using this terminology as third party is, beginning of December, I was told as a commissioner that it is not possible for it to be available to um, by three different attorneys. Um, asking the right questions finally got us to the correct answer of it and be valid, a specific way. Um, I would also be full of that. The design cannot be modified once that grant process starts. But to come to find out after the plant was modified to that grant application. Um, so I have, it's not like I have a distrust in what I'm being told, but I think getting the direction, the information directly from the individuals involved versus through the third party doesn't help, uh, eliminate a lot of the misinformation, miscomprehension out there on how these grants could be applied for and that. Um, so that's, that's kind of where I stand with that. Wanting those parties to fall in the decision-making process. Now with the ad hoc, that's something I didn't touch on earlier, but I feel it's not going to be productive, waste of time figuring out who's going to share that, who's going to make that up. When even they're going to need the information that we are needing right now. Um, so the time is going to be well spent obtaining this information and then seeing if it's viable going forward to that. But right now, I don't see it being viable.
I agree. I'll open up that footprint. The Martin and Mark said, uh, he came up with the whole terms and right, this is what we got personally. But that was, that was a change. That was a change after the grant. That's, that depends on, on energy. My point was that was a great, uh, solution.
Right. Because I've been told as a commissioner that the slip capacity cannot be increased within the footprint. So if that is true, and Arvin Mauch's response is directly to me, that's not a possibility. Then maybe a different engineering firm that has the ability to make that. Two individuals can build eight hundred square foot house, but one contractor might be able to utilize eight hundred square foot a lot better than another individual on the designs and their competency. So, um, that's, that's where I want that information directly from Arvin Mauch. And if it's still unknown, it's directly from them, then we can move forward potentially to someone else.
Okay. So, um, if you would mind, if you could, oh, yeah.
I'm just going to state, maybe there's a mistake. I'm just jealous of her before. That's what she can ask you. I have a couple of points concerning this brought up that we could be met out. Well, I think before we even begin or spin in place or start another direction, does the public support this? And we have to look at what are terms that we're each using, but having a totally different meaning footprint when most of the people that I have had um, had discussion with say footprint, they mean no more bigger docks than what we have. They mean not adding extra depth. But then it was changed when Barb was giving her presentation of, oh, didn't we mean footprint was within the attenuators? We need clear definition on what it is and what enhancement it be. And why take meetings, especially with expensive firms and everything? If the public doesn't even want to proceed to build a bigger arena. And would new construction be if we just tore out the old docks and built new ones in the same size? No extra slips, no expansion, not into the water. Let's just keep it as is. A nice small public arena. Let someone else build the environmental disaster on their part of the lake. Also harbor master is it is an ignorant, Marty. Are we going to create another position? Or are we going to have this person take it over? Because I believe, especially with the great changes we're going to have, either with replacement, expansion, whatever y'all might think to say. We need a harbor master that's experienced in exactly how a harbor is run. Um, I have a lot of questions. Number one, no maintenance done, you know, a twenty year dock lasting forty years and it's falling apart. Um, where's the foresight in that? Are we going to have a plan for this new deck? Or are we just gonna throw something up? And I don't see throwing rich money out there just doing a temporary electrical fix and then even go back through and totally reestablish the dock, firm it up, get a bigger electrical thing going. I mean, I guess why I'm getting frustrated is there needs to be, number one, does the public support this or not? Because eventually, if it isn't self sufficient, we're going to be paying tax dollars to keep this going. And you know, let's get someone that's qualified or has some sort of degree in environment or running a harbor docking business or whatever. Not just someone to plug it in because we've already got an employee and want this to be a little extra added interest there. Um, you know, I really have issue with more bubblers and bubblers, bubblers. There are tons of particles online. Um, as well as in journals dealing with the environment, that these bubblers are even miles away, the ice is becoming damaged by that and unstable. It warms the water, the fish are dying out because of bubblers. We had a gentleman here that said, the noise was incredible. It's like living in the garbage disposal, which you hear one of those bubblers. I mean, what does points city really want? I feel that I, as a person, like to see something ethologically sound done. What we have here is a disgrace. It's a pigsty out there at those decks that exist. Um, people raised on, uh, social media the question, what is the city's liability if this is a city marina? And you got a hundred people out there tracking down that key and it creates some light and someone can't swim, so they drown, or someone gets hit in the head and is permanently brain damaged from a breaking piece of dock. You know, I just personally, and I don't think I'm so far off from a lot of what what people would like is get this existing marina, even if you have to replace every duck that's there. Find out how to do it as environmentally soundly as you can with this little disruption of it. Give it up to something that is safe, that we can be proud of. And why not have a little excellent arena than a big patch together, not maintained very well, shit show, excuse me, going out out there. And footprint, yes. We need to have a definition of what footprint is. Do you want to create everything we can within the attenuators? A lot of people think of the footprint as what is already existing. I would rather see no construction out there, but I could support replacement of existing structures, the same size. If you can dig it up and get more bolts in there, fine. Don't make them any bigger any longer. Because we don't want a big marina in this city. There are too many people enjoying it. Okay. I'm sorry. I think my point's pretty clear. Thank you.
Um, my question is, uh, one that has been no maintenance here at all. Electric power's been bad for ten years. And say that doing maintenance is that normal for no maintenance from City of Boynton? Uh, we seem to see it not just here in the docks, but in other places too. So I don't understand why, especially electrical, being such an important problem that it's not maintained. I mean, if there's a problem, take care of it immediately. You don't wait ten, twelve years and then take care of it? Or put it on the books and then maybe two years later, take care of it? I mean, this has been going on for years. And now you guys are adjusting? I don't understand that. I mean, that's not how you take care of a house. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandy Richard, five six east Lincoln. Congratulations, you guys. Those are, you did an awesome job in each of your positions today and narrowing down potential paths forward. Um, one of the things I wanted to to touch on right away, quite close in my mind, was talking about the, um, engaging day for Tilly for the financials. Because, you know, at the end of the day, probably fund this is a really big deal. And it occurs to me that the financial analysis that they did for the one point six million dollar bond still provides you the answer of how much the existing forty-four slips, the revenues that it would provide, assuming that E doc is fixed or D doc, rather. So at that rate, you have approximately a million six between the, if you say, if you said half of the million, the one point six million dollar bond, which you said previously would be self funding. That leaves eight hundred thousand of that theoretically. The three ninety-two, um, which is subject to question of whether the NR, what did they will allow that to apply to? Um, plus the three twenty-seven for the land site utilities. And you've got two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in marina fund. So you've got anywhere from a ninety-six to a million eight. Um, but there, and so you have to follow my logic. You've got the math, at least, of what the revenues would be based on the existing footprint. I went back through the tape and I understand the video, audio. And I want to touch briefly on electrical repair. This is one one we didn't quite get to. We were talking in terms of seventy-five thousand dollars versus what was it? Three hundred and something. What I'd like to point out is that eleven thousand five hundred shows in both. So that needs to be taken out. Five thousand shows in both for system testing. So that takes it down to somewhere around sixty thousand dollar actual based on their estimates, not a local contractor, whoever. This is my logic. And today, I'd be curious to know how we're tracking on slip rentals versus year to date versus last year. Because that's something that's got to factor in, going to twenty twenty-three. Without knowing, I mean, it's twenty grand lost. Right now, you're projecting in the budget fifty-five thousand dollars revenue from transit slips. And I've been kind of eye long on dock B and it's not seeing the occupancy. So when you're thinking about the electrical part of it, consider that it's not actually seventy-five thousand dollars, somewhere south of sixty or less. Timing is important. Um, and the question about getting slip out here, I think is very important because what she said in one of hers with that talking about in in the last, the twenty-eighth meeting was that slip out was willing to work with us. And temporary, she said at one point, getting work from three to five years. But she didn't get that far in the conversation. So that was an issue. Um, the other thing on the grants, I wanted to mention to consider, and this is where, again, we need to get waterways and ask them straight up. But if the three ninety-two was for a new attenuator and dock B, then a portion of that could be used, perhaps, as you said, for dock E or in a replacement of the existing attenuators, not having the big thing that goes out in the water with some portion you're up. It's a new bill. It's an attenuator. So I think, I suspect that there's some opportunity to still use the three ninety-two if we ask a question. And in my opinion, on the electrical, because I sat in that Waterways Commission meeting, we don't have any issue with going ahead and using that to repair. And in Barb's words were, they understood we may need to do some of that for emergency repairs. When in fact, the actual grant was emergency utility repair. So I think there's a lot of potential that the financial issue isn't as big and the opportunity to go ahead and use some of that money would work. So if you got a million, eight hundred thousand available in the bond, that's the match for the three twenty-seven, three ninety-two, because we do have to make the match. So the finances may be there. You guys are rocking. You're doing a great job. Hopefully we'll get some great action items.
First thing I want to say is I don't like grants. And why I tell you what you can do, what you can do, I don't want you to do it. All that stipulation, that's what you have to do if you're going to use this one. Another part of it is the grant is not free money. It's it's paid for by the taxpayer somewhere. Around the area, nationwide, what have you. It's not free money. But I think a lot of the responsibility for financing. I think a lot of the responsibility for financing, the repairs, the upgrades, needs to be put on the people that are going to use this thing. Marty already stated, we're way low by our slip rentals this part of it, how much it costs. And I agree. Now, a lot of the people that wanting you to disagree with that, they don't want to pay more. They might be in on it on the cheap because they think the city should pay for it. That's why the waiting list is so long. They want to get in on the cheap. If you were to double the rental rate, your waiting list would increase by fifty percent. We could, we could get into a a way to earn more money quicker by actually slipping off. I guess first come, first bid basis. They want to help pay for it. You're going to get a lot more money. Again, people are going to disagree with that because they don't want to pay more. But the expense of a run of this thing should not be put on the backbone of the citizens. It's got to some way and somehow in the future, engage to support itself. Now, they say we've been making forty thousand dollars a year on it. And forty thousand dollars would not be put back into the maintenance, obviously. We would not be where we're at now. I don't think anybody's been stealing that money, but it would be interesting to know where that money went. Did he go back into the general fund? It certainly wasn't a sign earmarked for use in the marina. And it probably should have been. Which is mismanagement of Marina funds. But I don't know how far I want to go with that. It's just a question to throw up together. I think I'll let that be enough to be said for right now. Thank you.
John, can six one street. Yeah, I'm a voter, have been a voter, now retired. So I have a lot of experience both all through. And a lot of businesses too. And yeah, it seems to me that we've got half of those people that are very vocal against it. But I think there's people that recognize that Marina is an important aspect of the town and brings money into the town and supports the town. I don't know what makes us think that we know more about Marinas than all the other towns around here. I mean, uh, the following towns all are smaller than us. And they all have a Marina twice as large as us, at least some, one of them four times larger than us. But yeah, Northport, Elk Rapids, Cleveland, Sutton's Bay, St. Aprils, Rochester. And maybe there's a few others here in Northern Michigan. Our Marina is almost an embarrassment. It's a little itty bitty Marina, forty-four slips we have and it's well run for what it is, but you know, voters come here, they can't buy fuel, they can't pump out. All the other meters, rings, they have fuel and pump out capability. So, you know, I think the Marina needs to be twice as large as what this personally. And I don't think it would take up hardly any view of the lake. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet of waterfront that provide good views of the lake. In terms of something mentioned about sixty and eighty foot boats, I bet we don't get a sixty foot boat that maybe once a month, and I bet we don't get an eighty foot boat once a season down. They just don't, they're just not coming here. And I don't think that they, but if we had a sixty or eighty foot slip, that would increase those kind of boats coming here. I don't think so. The rental rate structure here is comparable with the rental rate structure you know, throughout the area. The state really sets the rules on how much you're paying. If you just wanted a broad brush idea of how much it costs for people that they go in there and go, it's not regular cost. A seasonal slip here is about a hundred dollars a foot. If you have a twenty-five foot boat, you're going to plan on paying twenty-five hundred dollars for the summer season. Thirty foot boat, three thousand dollars. And the daily rate for a transient that comes in is probably for two dollars a foot for one night or something. So if you have a thirty foot boat, you come in, you gotta pay sixty dollars for one night's lodging. And we shouldn't be embarrassed right now, charging normal rates for dock D with no electricity. We're, we're ripping people off with that, you know, but people not, not having access to end of electricity, keep batteries charged. Yeah, some people might have air conditioning on those. Yeah, it's just, to me, that's just not right, but we're charging them. So anyway, I think we could, we could provide some minimal expansion of the Marina without affecting the view personally at all. That's my opinion.
Well, one question has come up. Resources. As I understand it, it's not ready to be managed.
Probably, but I'm not sure exactly what that, what their cost would be or what their availability is. One of the things I'm thinking about as you're talking about this is, okay, when could they come up and meet with us? And would they come up and have another discussion with us to set some of these things up? Oh, and would there be a fee for it? I don't know that without asking that question. But we do have money budgeted for, uh, you know, in the Marina Fund that we could allocate for, for those types of things, but what that amount would be at this point, I don't know. I believe we can make some progress. Yes, there may need to be another step at some point along the way to bring them in. To get additional services.
Uh, I would say, I would think that Adam Marsh would be more than willing and welcome to come and talk about everything that we talked about with them. You, you know, don't mean that in the end they're going to get a paycheck. If they're not willing to, after fifteen years of dealing with this, uh, and they're not willing to try and get this thing to an end without another written check, then I have no desire to even call. At that point in time, I would say, let's move on and let's find another. Uh, you know, it was said by, you know, uh, you know, Sandy, a lot of those, a lot of those uh, things were sort of lame. It's, it's, it's sort of uh, not the same what she was explaining because the, while the one point six, it still included, you know, part of it, you know, going out the other side of it. Uh, and it wasn't a total rebuild of the Marina base. So it was the attenuators and the, you know, expanding out. So, and we've been told all the way along, they, of that, of the tech. Can, can, you know, are there grants for rebuilding or are there not? Because at that point in time, then, you know, it's, it is a lot of that. So I guess, uh, just to clarify your point, uh, you know, I have no problem with them coming here, sitting down and saying, okay, let's go over this painting one more time. And if they're not willing to do that, then it's time to say goodbye.
Okay, well, we're comfortable.
Yeah, one, one big takeaway I'd like is there to be a directive given to Mike for a timeline follow-up on an extension request.
On the permit?
On the permitted extension, yeah. Um, so if you can figure that out and send an email to me as an individual commissioner or to the board itself um, on what our timeline is, because I do not want to come into a meeting with my back to the wall. Like I have that, that's too many. Um, I think that's the most important takeaway is figuring out extending that.
Maybe suggestion that I would make emotion that Mike and Q work together and if someone else wants, I'd be willing, Marty, I don't care. But a three man team or a two man team to contact Army Corps of Engineers, find the answers, time to that, go out of the rate commission, find the answer. Work with our, our local contractor is not going to be able to answer these questions. That's not his role. But we do have a PDF that we put out there and we have that information. So we use that information as well. Um, engage Adam Marshall. So everything we talked about. I guess what I'm asking is, you may argue, is I'd be happy with that emotion with a two week time period to make those contacts. So we can come back in two weeks. It may not have to be an agenda item, but at least staff and us would have some direction with this answer. You know, I would include a financial solvency too. I'm asking, what that emotion and my second question, do you want to let the uh, Hugh, you want to keep leaving that and you want one of us to help?
Well, I, I believe that I'm too willing to.
Okay.
If that's appropriate.
Yes, yes. I, I will say, I agree with Tom. I would like an update on all of these. The most important being the extended deadline, otherwise this is all of this, again, a wasted, wasteful conversation. But that being the most important one, but at least an update on each one of these action points consistently at every meeting going forward.
I think that's reasonable.
Is that responsible in two weeks, or at least the fact that much information you've gathered in twenty years?
Yes.
One better motion.
I don't think it's necessary.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion of, you know, I'll make a motion that we direct administration to follow up with the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, in regards to extension deadlines, communication on the waterways condition in the status of grants and how are that being used in regards to this, uh, replace or, or we don't stand. I would contact with the electrical PDF, commute the PDF and find out how we go about anything caused by the medical. Follow up with Adam Marshall to finally an exact footprint and for options of footprints within the batteries. And also a report with our branch consultant to give us some correction. These contacts will be with us two weeks deadline. Uh, we'll report back with these, with this information in two weeks deadline another next meeting.
I was gonna say, would you like to have a great conversation with them? Because our timeline, like you said, is going to blow by and then it will be next year or going forward. We hope to touch them because the D and R system won't allow us. That's what we approached, that's what we were facing with earlier during the budgeting process. So, uh, just reviewing the rates, whether we're going to get to that, we're two, two third right now, if we're going to get to the third third, what that looks like, how in depth you'd like to go with that. But I know when we brought it up during the budgeting process, we were called hands off because of the timeline structure.
I would add as my motion, the, the rates that we charge uh, in regards to next year, in regards to timeline, in regards to more than flow on the recommended prices to go to save.
Did you say that we're communicating for the question?
Yeah, no, it's, 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 thanks, thanks, definitely, yes. Because we do need that.
Yes, as part of the city's labor agreements and personnel practices, uh, we have a committee that annually reviews our proposed health, dental and vision and related insurances for uh, uh, for our full-time employees to see if they continue to best meet, meet our needs or if there's any changes that uh should be considered. Uh, this committee is made up of representatives of our police bargaining unit, the DPW Water Waste Water Bargaining Unit, non-union employees and management. Uh, this year, uh, as we went into our rate increases, we were hit with uh double-digit rate increases for the first time in a number of years. Our recent uh rate history prior to this has been uh pretty reasonable increases, usually around three to six percent. As part of this year's review, the committee felt it would be beneficial to reach out to other agents who help other organizations uh, in looking at various providers and securing the best combination of coverages and price. Uh, the city has been using Cortez Flynn as our insurance for well over twenty years. In reaching out and interacting with other agents in the course of our review, reviewing our options this year, it was a strong consensus of the committee that it would be beneficial to change our agent to Meadowbrook Insurance Agent out of Southfield. Uh, they work with uh the same insurance providers that we currently have as well as many others. So there will be no disruption in coverages and they can shop as well to ensure that we have the best packages. Uh, they work with many other governmental agencies across the state, including the city of East Jordan, who has been very happy with them. There is no direct cost to the city or its employees in switching agents since their services are covered by fees provided by the actual insurance carrier. Like for our health insurance, our insurance carriers, Priority Health, and they pay, they have a way to pay them directly. Uh, if approved by the uh city commission, the change in agents would happen at the first of the month, August first. It would run until we felt there was and would run until we felt there was need for making another change. Uh, this would provide ample time for the new agent to be well-positioned to research and provide us options in advance of our upcoming, uh, renewals. So it's a recommendation, uh, that the city commission authorized staff to, uh, proceed using, uh, Meadowbrook Insurance Company as the city's, uh, agent and in securing employee health, dental, uh, vision and related coverages going forward. I should mention in the review this year, uh, we reached out to a number of agents. Again, working with Cortez Flynn, uh, Meadowbrook, we had another agent that was, uh, suggested to us through the Ask Me Bargaining Unit. Uh, but they weren't able to help us out, uh, much with regards to that. This process started probably in November last year. And we've been working, uh, with their, uh, with, uh, Meadowbrook Insurance, uh, since that time, he's kind of been, um, helping us work our way through what options the city may have, timelines in doing this, uh, how we should be rated, things of that nature. But to go any further, uh, there needs to be, there's only one company that can be our agent of record. And currently that's Cortez Flynn. So if we wanted to do something significantly different and try somebody else, we have to have a new agent of record. And that's what, if this commission approved the motion today or the recommendation today, that's what would be happening. Uh, again, there's no long-term commitment to this, but after meeting with all the, uh, employee groups on, at many, many meetings, uh, this was their strong recommendation. So I'd be glad to answer any questions the commission may have.
Uh, I don't, I appreciate, uh, the fact and, um, this is, you know, fun to be in address. And I think, um, you know, with the employees being on, on board and agreeing with this new Mike, I have no problem. And, um, look forward to, uh, a new, uh, change base and, uh, save the city some money. I just, I'd be curious, what, what is the beneficial is the change?
Uh, the employees felt that there'd be a bit more responsive, uh, service from them with regards to shopping. Uh, various programs to make sure we have the best price, to make sure that we're rated properly, uh, so that, and whether we're a large or small, uh, employer uh, with regards to that. And one of their concerns was, uh, making sure that the information was provided to them sooner, uh, than it has been in the past. Uh, so they'd have more time to, uh, make informed decisions.
Um, I'm in most order. When I first went through this, I'm trying to figure out exactly Jordy's question, what's the financial benefit, what is underlying reasoning? One direction here, I reached out to a few city employees and, um, they all said that they're strongly in favor of switching agents. Um, just a clarification, so the agent would be switching effectively August first.
Correct.
But policy provider potentially, it wouldn't be even considering switching until beginning of the year, correct?
Uh, yeah, until our policy renewal is up, correct.
Right. And that's when you might be able to catch the savings, depending on what this new agent can provide.
Correct. And again, I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise, you know. Rates are going up for lots of things as we all know right now, so I'm not saying that there's gonna be a reduction in cost or, you know, actual savings in that respect. But we want to make sure that we're getting the best deal for the best coverage that we can get for all our employees. And that's what they felt that we, uh, would have a better chance of doing, uh, trying, uh, working with Meadowbrook Insurance this time.
Yeah, I'm in full support, whatever, I'm happy speaking with several employees, they feel that they will be provided with a lot better services with this new agent.
I'll make a motion that the city commission authorized staff to proceed using Meadowbrook Insurance Agency as the city's agent in securing administrative employee health, dental vision and related coverage going forward effective August first. I, uh, when we were having correspondence back and forth in regards to commissions with attorney and that, um, one of the things that was provided was that there needs to be a resolution appointing a commissioner to the planning commission. Um, I'm not contesting being on the planning commission, I just want to make sure we are brought there. TG is about, and I would like to have a resolution, um, putting Tom on the commission, that way he don't come back at us for not doing what is appropriate.
You want to add that for the next agenda?
The way, the way the charter reads is that he appoints, like, he made, Hugh made the recommendation, the board, and the board approves that resolution appointing one of us to the, is the way I.
It's not necessary because policy, that doesn't matter, which commission sets policy. So, so my appointment was set for the last mission.
Well, again, reappoint them.
Every election.
Yeah, that's how, that's how. Well, actually, every, yeah.
Yes, every two years.
We can put that out for the next meeting.
Yeah, two, uh, one was, uh, so the cleaning contractors that we have through, uh, for the bathrooms, they're, they're on duty all year long.
Correct.
Correct. And for holidays.
Yes.
Okay, because there was a lot of information on holidays with that. I had numerous points, but, no, you know, no supplies with that, so.
Like on the Fourth of July? Okay, I hadn't heard of any, so.
Uh, second one, I actually had three. Second one would be, thanks Dennis, thanks Kevin, uh, thank you, thank you. Scott, you know, for always being at our meetings, the department heads. Um, I'm, I'm really remiss that, uh, ever since we hired this gentleman, then we have not seen our DPW director at one single meeting. And, uh, I would appreciate that him being a department that I sincerely believe these people all the same times out of their busy days. And, uh, I have a problem, I, I think. Uh, lastly, uh, the, uh, John's gone now, he hasn't said anything about it a lot, but we, we talked about it, um, long, uh, February, January, I can't remember, but the atrium corner looks like crap. It always looks like crap. We said we were gonna take care of it and it still hasn't been taken care of. And from that end of town, it's one of those first entries into town for you. Uh, this is, I don't know, I guess it's nothing. And, uh, I think that needs to be addressed. We said it was going to be addressed, um, and, um, I, I would like to make sure that it gets addressed. But maybe, maybe we can get that message back to the DPW director who's not here.
No, I don't. Okay, I don't do, so, uh, under the circumstances.